Fifteen May, the time is now seven PM. Cindy, can we have a roll call?
Yes. Mayor Turley, Gary Brevetto.
Here.
Bob Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Harvey.
Here.
Ken Matthews.
Here.
Noel Sawyer.
Here.
John Schaefer.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have the kinds of things that we really like to do at city council meetings and have some presentations and awards. And our first acknowledgement this evening is for the Pike's Peak or Bust Rodeo as well as our Girls of the West and also the Range Riders. What I'm going to do first is turn this over to the president of the Range Riders, Ron Brown. Ron, if you can come up to the podium and give us your name and your address and tell us what's going on with the Pike's Peak rodeo.
Whole address or just town?
Town's good.
Okay. I'm Ron Brown, I'm from Colorado Springs. Good evening, Woodland Park City Council members. My name's Ron Brown, I'm this year's president of the Pike's Peak Range Riders. This will be our sixty-sixth anniversary and I've been on thirty-five of these.
Wow.
I was a resident of Teller County back in the late nineteen-seventies. I lived up off of Edlow Road for a few years. Loved it up here. Starting in nineteen forty-nine, the Range Riders have had a long relationship with the Woodland Park area and Teller County. Our first two range rides started at the Broadmoor Hotel, came up Cheyenne Canyon or Cheyenne Mountain around the backside of Pike's Peak, and terminated here in Woodland Park just down the road at Paradise Ranch, which is where the Safeway Shopping Center is now. Forty-four of our sixty-six rides have taken place in Teller County. This year, our fall family ride was held at Al Hagedorn's Broken Wagon Ranch off of Edlow Road. Previous to that, we've had several family rides, the Clark Ranch near Divide, Rainbow Valley Ranch south of Divide, and the Gillette Pancake Rocks area. The Range Ride was born in nineteen forty-nine. Two friends came up with the idea, one, my grandfather, Ken Brookhart, and his friend, Everett Conover, as an idea to help promote the Pike's Peak or Bust Rodeo. The ride is a five-day excursion, or as I like to call it, a great adventure. We have a wrangler crew that watches over all our horses while they're on the picket line, but each rider is responsible for the care and feeding of their own horse. Our camp is set up by a camp crew, our equipment is all transported by truck. We have a commissary crew that cooks delicious meals for us and no one goes hungry. All this involves year-long planning of twenty-three separate committees to make this ride happen. At the end of each ride, we celebrate with a formal dinner where we give out awards to members and buckles are given for our race and layover day events. Also at that time, we present the Silver Spur Award to an outstanding community leader. This year's ride will be held June eighteenth through the twenty-second, starting with the Colorado Springs Western Street Breakfast downtown Colorado Springs. From there, the Range Riders ride over to Norris Penrose Stadium where we will load into trailers and trucks. And this year, our ride will be down in Custer County at the Mountain Meadows Ranch, a ranch owned by the family of one of our members. From there, we take daily rides out and we have one day for our race and layover. We'll return on Sunday, June twenty-second for our after-ride dinner and then back to our ordinary lives. Thank you for the opportunity for letting me present this. Are there any questions?
No, Ron, but thank you.
Okay.
I've been either observing or participating in that breakfast downtown every year for about twenty-five years and I think it's a great event.
That's great. I should mention, I forgot too, that all the proceeds from the street breakfast go to local military families.
Hooah. All right.
Thank you.
Gary Markle, who is the president of the Pike's Peak or Bust Rodeo, come on up, Gary.
My name's Gary Markle and I live in Colorado Springs and Cripple Creek. I'm not as formal as Ron, so I don't have a prepared text, but I will take a few minutes and tell you about what we have going on this year. I suspect most of you know about the history of the Pike's Peak or Bust Rodeo, but we're in our seventy-fourth year. Obviously, next year will be seventy-five and we'll have a big celebration for that. The rodeo was started by Spencer Penrose as a way to bring his friends and so forth back east to come out and celebrate Western Heritage Days. And he expressly started the rodeo to support local military charities. So all the proceeds that the rodeo raises goes back to local military charities and we've been doing that since the beginning. And the last estimate was about over three million dollars has been donated to military charities since inception, so we're real proud of that. This year's rodeo is going to be a great rodeo. We have just about all of our contestants signed up and contracted for, and many of the top cowboys and cowgirls across the country have decided to come and have contracted to be here. The dates are July ninth through the twelfth. We have five performances, starting on Wednesday night, Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday afternoon, and then the finals is on Saturday night. What's different about this year is that we will crown the winner of each event on Saturday night. In the past, contestants have come and competed, but nobody really knew who won in the bareback riding or the bronc riding or whatnot. But this year, we'll have what we call a shoot-off, where two people from each event will compete with each other. They'll pick a bull to ride out of three different bulls and then they'll pick a steers to rope and they'll go at it and then we'll present the check to the winner. So it's going to be a great rodeo this year. I want to thank each and every one of you, I want to thank Woodland Park, each one of you members of city council for all your support, for getting Woodland Park residents, Teller County residents, down to the rodeo each year. You've been a great supporter for many, many years, so thank you very much.
Thanks a lot, Gary. And now Corliss Palmer, who's been with the Girls of the West for some time, is going to introduce those young ladies. Corliss, thanks.
Hi, yes, I'm Corliss Palmer. I'm a longtime volunteer for the rodeo as a board member and director of the Girl of the West program. This is actually my thirteenth year. I schedule and escort the girls to over a hundred and sixty appearances between mid-May and mid-July. The Girl of the West is a two-summer commitment. Oh, by the way, I'm from Falcon, I forgot that part.
Thanks.
So it's a two-summer commitment. The aide is chosen one summer and she is a competition that is comprised of horsemanship, speech, interview, and appearance. And then the aide from one year moves up to be the Girl of the West the following summer. You might have seen our pickup, Perkins Motors provides us a ram pickup every year and we've had it wrapped in pink with lots of graphics on it the last several years, so we're very noticeable around the community. Now I'll introduce the girls. Kate Watson is the Girl of the West this year, she was here last year. She's the twenty-two-year-old daughter of Dwayne Watson and Didra Smith. She's currently an audio production student at the Art Institute of Colorado with a goal of becoming a live show producer. As a third-generation Colorado native, Kate has always had a passion for horses, rodeo, and the Western way of life. She competed in local Jim Connors National Barrel Horse Association races and Rocky Mountain Rainy Horse Association shows. She was a member of four-H for ten years, showed goats, sheep, and steers, and she was a member of the Pike's Peak Range Rets for seven years. She served as queen of Black Forest Saddle Club in 2012, sorry, and she rides an American quarter horse named Tinkerbell. And the aide to Girl of the West is Rachel Broughton. She's the eighteen-year-old daughter of Brian and Julie Broughton. She's a Colorado native, recent graduate, well, she graduates next week actually, from Lewis Palmer High School, where she's played lacrosse and they made playoffs, which was great. She will attend West Texas A&amp;M University in the fall, majoring in psychology and criminal justice. She's been active in National Little Britches for six years, competing in all the events, but her passion is barrel racing. She will compete on the rodeo team at West Texas A&amp;M. She was a member of the Pike's Peak Range Rets for six years and she rides an American quarter horse named Slugger. So please enjoy the Girls of the West presentation. And this is their first speech of the year.
Oh, good.
And we have some posters in the back. If you could put them up around the community, we would really appreciate it.
Sure will. Coming up, ladies.
Get ready, as Cinch presents the Pike's Peak or Bust Rodeo. July ninth through the twelfth, two thousand and fourteen, are the dates, and the Norris Penrose Event Center in Colorado Springs is the place. The Norris Penrose Event Center is one of the finest places in the country to enjoy the sport of rodeo, and all of the top talent in the sport will be there to compete. I'm Kate Watson, Girl of the West.
And I'm Rachel Broughton, aide to Girl of the West.
The Seventy-Fourth Annual Pike's Peak or Bust Rodeo runs Wednesday, July ninth, through Saturday, July twelfth, with performances at seven fifteen PM Wednesday through Saturday evenings and a Saturday matinee at twelve forty-five PM.
The Pike's Peak or Bust Rodeo will feature four performances of Invitational Championship rodeo at its finest, with the finals championship shootout on Saturday night. The best in each event will move on to compete in the finals where the top prize money will be awarded. This rodeo is for the true fan, the first-timer, and everyone in between. The Harry Bold Rodeo Company provides premium bucking bulls and horses, and our announcer, Boyd Paul Haymes, keeps the crowd engaged, excited, and informed from the back of his horse in the arena.
The stars of the Seventy-Fourth Annual Pike's Peak or Bust Rodeo are the amazing athletes who come to compete in seven events, which include bareback riding, steer wrestling, team roping, saddle bronc riding, tie-down roping, barrel racing, and bull riding. There's more crowd-pleasing fun with mutton bustin', where a trophy is awarded to the winner at each performance. For complete pandemonium, be sure to catch the Wild Cow Milking, where the bravest teams compete for bragging rights. And that's not all, our barrel man and specialty act, Mark Swangler, makes sure the rodeo fans enjoy every minute of every performance. With his outrageous antics, Mark creates an atmosphere of family fun for all ages.
Plan to get your tickets early for the Pike's Peak or Bust Rodeo because this is going to be a sellout. Plus, you save three dollars on every ticket by purchasing your tickets in advance. Visit pikespeakorbus.org to get your tickets today. The Norris Penrose Event Center ticket office is open Monday through Friday from ten AM to seven PM.
Pike's Peak or Bust Rodeo is a nonprofit event dedicated to preserving our Western heritage while supporting our local military and their families. This organization is led by an all-volunteer Board of Directors and several hundred other volunteers who help make this event happen each year. From the front-of-the-house greeters, ushers, and security, to the barns, chutes, and grounds, it takes thousands of man-hours to put on this first-class event. You'll see retired and active-duty military, off-duty police and fire service professionals, local business owners and executives, ranchers and cowboys, and many others who fill in the ranks of volunteers at the Pike's Peak or Bust Rodeo.
Thanks to longtime support from Fort Carson, the Fifty-Fourth Annual Street Breakfast will get the Colorado Springs area geared up for the rodeo season. Join us downtown Wednesday, June eighteenth, anytime between five-thirty and nine AM to be a part of this fun, family tradition. Enjoy delicious pancakes and eggs cooked and served by our own Fort Carson soldiers. Tickets are only five dollars and kids under five eat free. Then, send off the Pike's Peak Range Riders as a ride out of town to begin their sixty-sixth annual five-day ride to promote the Pike's Peak or Bust Rodeo.
The Sixty-Sixth Annual Kitty Dress-Up Review will be Saturday, July fifth, at the Norris Penrose Event Center. Registration will begin at nine AM with the contest at ten. There is no charge and children ages three through twelve will be competing in five categories: working cowboy, working cowgirl, novelty girl, novelty boy, and rodeo arena. All contestants will receive prizes with awards going to the top three in each event. Winners can also ride in the rodeo parade.
The Seventy-Fourth Annual Pike's Peak or Bust Rodeo Parade, a Colorado Springs favorite, is Tuesday evening, July eighth, at six-thirty PM in downtown Colorado Springs. This event takes place on Tahone Street, starting at St. Braine and heading south to Vermaheux. Free to watch and fun for the whole family, this beloved Western cultural event kicks off the annual Pike's Peak or Bust Rodeo in grand fashion. Money raised by parade entries will go directly toward assisting our local militaries and their families.
Then it's time to rodeo. Mark your calendar, buy your tickets, and get ready as Cinch presents championship rodeo action at its best. The dates again for the Pike's Peak or Bust Rodeo are Wednesday, July ninth, through Saturday, July twelfth.
There's lots to do before the rodeo begins. Grounds open at four PM for all evening performances and ten AM for the Saturday matinee. Come early, skip the traffic, and enjoy the family-friendly pre-show fun, including mutton bustin' tryouts, gold panning, pony rides, mechanical bull rides, and much, much more. Then, make sure to be in your seats by seven PM to enjoy the Pike's Peak Range Rets and the Pike's Peak Range Rider Pivot's horseback drill teams. After the rodeo, head on over to the Roadhouse Saloon for great live music, dancing, and some ice cold cores.
Our local military are honored at each performance: Fort Carson on Wednesday evening, Missile Defense and Three Hundred Second Airlift Wing on Thursday evening, Air Force Base Command on Friday evening, Air Force Academy at the Saturday matinee, and NORAD US Northcom on Saturday evening.
Advanced adult tickets start at twenty-three dollars and parking is free. Grandstand seating tickets for children twelve and under are half-price for all evening performances and only one dollar for the Saturday matinee. Military and group discounts are available.
Pike's Peak or Bust Rodeo is supported by generous sponsorships from many national and local sponsors. We encourage you to support these sponsors shown on our banner of company logos as well as the rodeo's website.
Remember to purchase your tickets online or at the Norris Penrose Event Center box office. You can find all this information and much more about the Pike's Peak or Bust Rodeo at our website, pikespeakorbus.org.
We look forward to seeing you at the Seventy-Fourth Annual Pike's Peak or Bust Rodeo, July ninth through the twelfth, at the Norris Penrose Event Center in Colorado Springs.
Very good. Ladies, if you could come back up with Ron and Gary and Corliss. I have the coveted Woodland Park pin, and I think a couple of you may have some already, so now you can make earrings out of them. And I really appreciate the promotion of something that's very unique to our culture and our way of life up here, so in addition to being really good athletes, I can't believe you've memorized that whole thing. Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much. You can just drink one beer.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for coming up. About twenty years ago, I did the Wild Cow Milking competition and it was not pretty.
A complete pandemonium, one?
Yes. Okay. All right. Again, thanks, guys. All right, Lisa, I think the next one you're going to take for us, and that's the presentation of the Bear Aware Drawing Contest by Columbine Elementary School.
Thank you, yes. And good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council. And I'm actually going to ask, if Renee Bunting is here, I want her to come join because she's our Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Chair of our committee, and of course, without the committee, we couldn't do any of this stuff. This is our Bear Awareness Annual Drawing Contest that we do every year. This is actually the second time that we've done this, and I don't know, many of you probably weren't here last year or may not recall, but we had a young gal from the high school here in Woodland Park come to us last year and talk to council and Keep Woodland Park Beautiful about the bears and how the bears were getting into the trash and being attracted by things that we were doing in our community, to our community, and putting the bears in danger as well as us and our community. And so one of the things that came out of that was that we should place more emphasis on bear awareness. So many actions have been taken, and Keep Woodland Park Beautiful has been tasked and takes on greatly this message to the community regarding bear awareness. So this is just one way that we are able to do that. And of course, what better than to do that with our young children? So this year, we approached Columbine Elementary, and Principal Bulkin, as well as art teacher Emily Heckman, were a tremendous help in this effort this year. I don't see them here. Oh, there they are. There, there she is. Thank you. So thank you so much for what you've done for us and allowing us to come into Columbine and do this contest and also provide bear awareness. We really appreciate that. And so we have some awards, I'm just going to go over some details on that contest. So the art teacher for Columbine, Ms. Heckman, took on a lot of this responsibility, and what she did was she gave the children in grades one through four our tips, our bear awareness tips. Tips like, don't leave your trash out at night. Don't put bird seed in your bird seed feeders during the summer. Even though you want to, it attracts the bears. Don't, believe it or not, have a scented candle in your window and open up your window, it'll attract bears. And so they were given all these tips by her through us and then asked to present us a drawing, if they would, that basically demonstrated these tips. And we got over one hundred and fifty drawing submissions from grades one through four at Columbine Elementary, and it was just, all of them were just wonderful drawings and demonstrations, but we parted down to a good fifty, just based on the tips and the demonstration of those tips, and then the group literally voted. And we put numbers on each drawing and then they voted on the number that they felt best demonstrated, so they didn't have names or anything like that. And all of those children were given a forum, at a school forum. We work very closely with Tanya Sharp, she's the district wildlife manager, and she has her own bear awareness volunteer group. Jason Pierce is one of those volunteers. And so on the thirtieth of April, we actually were able, through the principal, to visit the school and do a presentation to all the students. So on top of the drawings this year, we were able to talk to them about the bears and give them a presentation. And then we gave them a coloring book that was provided that also demonstrates those tips and asked them to share that with their family and friends so that they could further spread that awareness and they could become experts in their families. And the presentation that we gave basically explained the biology, the habitat, and the behavior, how to reduce negative encounters with bears, and how to live with them safely. A couple of things before I announce and ask Mayor Pro Tem to come down and help us with the awards that I just want to let you know about with regards to bear awareness is that the drawing contest actually doesn't end here because we actually take it a step further, and we've worked with the Rampart Range Library and their lower-level gallery is going to have all of those drawings displayed from the twenty-seventh of May to June sixth. And it's an excellent opportunity for not only the children to see their work that they worked so hard up in the library, but also to see who the winners were. And then we also have a table out that provides oodles of information on how to live with the bears and how to behave around bears and not attract them. Then on June seventh, we are going to have our annual Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Cleanup, and we're so excited for the cleanup this year because we just have metamorphosed this into a little bit more where we have tables of people that come and provide information. And one of those tables is going to be Tanya Sharp and her bear volunteers, and they'll have a bear hide and they'll have all sorts of bear tips as well. And then in June, on the seventeenth, right here in the city hall chambers, we're going to have Tanya Sharp come with her bear awareness group, and it's open to the public, it's open to the whole community to come and learn about how to interpret bear behaviors and how to live around them. And then also, just so you know, we're also looking into, alongside with the code enforcement official and Bob Larson and the Woodland Park Police Department, as well as Tanya, just looking at our codes for garbage and refuse to better determine if we're in fact putting enough in there for regulation and enforcement, because bears and trash really go hand-in-hand. So we're going to be looking at that a little bit further. And so, without further ado, I'm going to ask Mayor Pro Tem to come down and join us, and then Renee, if you wouldn't mind grabbing the stack of awards and giving those to Mayor Pro Tem as she comes down. And I'm going to call your names, this is the drawing for our first grade winner, Avery Walker. Avery, could you come up and meet Mayor Pro Tem Harvey and Renee? And she did a wonderful drawing of a bear, and obviously you can tell that the trash is full. So it's during the day and the trash is full, and guess what attracted the bear? So wonderful job, Avery. And then we have our second grade winner, and that's Isaiah Wiley. And what I love about this drawing is his little caricature, he's got, I guess, a balloon, you would call it, coming out of his head because you know he's contemplating getting into the trash, but yet it's crossed out, so you know you're not supposed to go there. So it's really great. Good job. And then we also have our third grade winner, and that's Lindsey McLaughlin. And Lindsey did a very fine drawing also of a bear. And what I think I like most about this, again, it's the trash is out and it's daytime, but you can see the little sad face in the bear's stomach and the little red, it looks like a steak, I'm not really sure, but it's really great. So. And then our last award goes to Tyler Thyme, our fourth grade winner. And I'm not sure that Tyler was able to make it, maybe, would you, Principal Bulkin, would you be willing to bring this up? And Tyler did a wonderful job as well, where he displays, again, it's daytime and there's trash, and the bear is actually inside the trash on this one, so we just, we really appreciate all the effort that they've done to learn the tips and the willingness of the principal and her staff to allow us to come and talk to the children. So, good job.
I'm very proud of you here at city hall, here where I'm sure your parents are and your schools are, but I bet the bears are very thankful that you're helping to educate everybody about how to live with bears and safety. So perhaps one more. Go. Two. Don't think this is your field. Got it? Thank you. Thanks, guys. Thanks, guys. Thanks, guys. Well, I look forward to seeing all of the posters in the library, that'll be great. All right. Thanks, guys. All right, Kelly, you're up next. We have the presentation of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen. And Kelly Case, our finance director, will make this presentation along with our auditor, Wendy Swanhorst.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, council. It's my pleasure to introduce you again this year, and for some of you the first time, our auditor, Wendy Swanhorst. She's been working with the city and for you, actually, doing the city's audit annually and reviewing and helping staff put together the financial statements each year. So without further ado, I'll introduce Wendy.
Wendy Swanhorst with Swanhorst and Company. Those last two agenda items are a little hard to follow, but we'll try and make this quick and not too boring. We audited your financial statements for the year ended twelve thirty-one, two thousand and thirteen. You probably got in PDF format these financial statements. And then we give you what we call a management letter, which is our communication to you guys as the governing board. So I'm going to stick to what this management letter says, and then if you guys have any questions on these, we'll try to answer those too. But this letter starts out by telling you what it is an auditor does, and essentially we're hired by you to tell you that the numbers in these financial statements that come from your accounting records are fairly stated in all material respects. And so within this document, you'll see our audit opinion. It's a clean, unmodified opinion, the best opinion you can get. One of the other things we do, we did this year, but we don't do every year, but any time you receive over half a million dollars in federal dollars, we do some additional audit testing. testing. That's all required by the federal government, just to make sure you comply with all the rules and regulations. And then our last responsibility under the auditing standards is if we identify any material weaknesses in your internal controls that could allow for errors in the financial statements, fraud, or anything like that, that's what we're required to tell you about in this letter. In summary, I would say your accounting records are in very good condition. The only thing that's really mentioned in this, in this management letter is that because you're a small organization, you don't have internal controls or segregation of duties over everything. Meaning, sometimes you've got people that can do every step of a process, you know? You've got pretty good internal controls in place, but there are just some things because you're so small, you know, you're never going to have two people involved in everything. So, that, that it sometimes can allow for those human errors and things like that. But we just don't see things like that. We don't make significant adjustments to your accounting records or anything. So, I'd say the audit went really well. And that, that is all I have to tell you. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Wendy, or Mayor Protem, before we get started with the questions, let me just remind the council that this is an auditing document based on generally accepted accounting principles, not to be confused with our budget document. There's very few places where the numbers actually correspond. And sometimes, over the years, that's caused frustration for councils. But we can certainly correlate the numbers as best we can for some very specific areas. But just understand that they're two very different documents for two very different purposes. Thank you.
Okay, questions from council for Wendy? Go ahead.
Actually, yeah, I came, came to learn that last year when I had a lot of questions, most of which were irrelevant. But I, I did want, ask your, Kelly, to, to provide us on page 28, where we list the revenues expenditures. Normally, the first time we see the audit numbers are when you come out with, with the following your budget. Like, this October, we'll see the audited revenues expenditures broken down by the normal categories. Like, for instance, on page 28, you have taxes, but there's all kinds of taxes. There's property taxes, the sales taxes, a number of others. So, I've asked Kelly to provide that breakdown kind of in advance of what we'll see in October because that's relevant information right now. So, appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
So, that was a statement, not a question?
No, that, well, yeah, that's a statement, yes.
It was a request.
It was a request.
A request.
And it's duly noted.
Thank you. No? Kelly?
Yes.
Wendy?
Thanks.
Great.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Moving on to item five, additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
There are none this evening.
All right. We'll move on then to the consent calendar. I'll turn it back over to you, Cindy. It looks like Bill may have a couple of comments as well.
He may. We have four items tonight. Approval of your last meeting's minutes, that was May 1st. Approval of the April 2014 Statement of Expenditures. And then consideration and approval for two contracts, the city and Rocky Mountain Materials for the construction of the city hall park and ride lot right behind city hall building. And the second between Woodland Park, City of Woodland Park and Schmitt, construction for the resurfacing of portion of the Centennial Trail. What questions may we answer?
Questions?
Yes. Centennial Trail. What's a timeframe for that?
Well, it'll be paved this, this summer. We don't have a specific schedule from the contractor yet because we don't have a contract yet. So, once we have a contract, but typically, it's in the July, August timeframe that we'll be resurfacing this portion of the Centennial Trail.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion then to accept the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Take a vote, please.
Thank you. Brevetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Shafer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks. Unfinished business appears we have none. We'll move on now to item eight, Alpha. Consider ordinance number 1216, amending chapter 18.09 of the Woodland Park Municipal Code to allow for up to two dwelling units within the same structure as a permitted use within all commercial zone districts. And set the public hearing for June 5th, 2014. This is a legislative action. This is an initial posting. There is no public comment anticipated for this. So, I'll now turn it over to Ms. Riley.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Council members, good evening. This is the initial posting for ordinance 1216. This idea of allowing for up to two residential units within a commercial zone was generated out of the community assessment for Main Street. And the mayor picked up on a comment that was made during the focus groups and met with myself and the city manager and said, "Let's take a look at this and try to get this done." So, as a result, we have put together a fairly simple ordinance that amends a portion N of our use matrix. And the planning commission heard this last week. They recommend approval of the ordinance. And at the next meeting, I will be happy to give you a thorough review of the content unless you have some questions this evening.
This is the initial posting, but does council have any questions for staff?
No.
If not, I'll entertain a motion to consider ordinance number 1216 on its first posting for a public hearing to be scheduled on the 30th of June.
So approved.
Second. I'll second it. Okay. Thanks. Vote, please.
Thank you. Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Shafer?
Yes.
Brevetto?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
We'll see Sally again in the near future. All right, now to item nine, public hearings. Where public comment can be heard, we have one item, I believe. And if I can enter into the record, this statement about electronic media or electronic systems. Council members, use electronic devices to access the materials relevant to the public hearing before us. Be assured that this is to, is the common practice of the city council, that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communications during the public hearings. Okay. Lisa, over to you.
Thank you. This is a request for a vacation of right-of-way for Aspen Street. This is the portion of Aspen Street that lies between the alley, which is in between Lake Avenue and South Avenue, as well as South Avenue. And you can see in this picture here, that's about midway in, in between here to here. Our applicants for this request are Peter Papesku. He is the property owner of the house over here off to the, the west of the Aspen Street right-of-way. He's property owner of 308 Aspen Street. And also, the second applicant is the other abutting owner to this street right-of-way. And that owner is Mr. Steve Kopp. And he is the property owner of this vacant lot, which is Lot 4. And these two property owners are looking to vacate this Aspen Street right-of-way. The owner of the 308 Aspen Street is claiming that he uses this as his sole access and also as part of his parking of his vehicles. And you can tell from the terrain that's been trampled down from this visual, this aerial, that the predominant amount of vegetation that's been trampled down is directly to the front of his house, which the front of his house faces Aspen Street. And then this is the vacant lot for Steve Kopp. And his intentions are that he had, this is vacant property lot that he owns and is looking to clean up Aspen Street for potential sale of that property in the future or perhaps development. He's not really sure exactly which, but he knows that it needs to be cleaned up either way. The other thing that I want to point out from this aerial map is that the northern portion, and you'll see this in my next example a little bit better, of Aspen Street going up to Lake Avenue, which is up here, has already been vacated. And this was vacated in May of 1994 in an easement plat that shows that vacation, as well as this portion of the alley that divides this area. And as you can tell, it's unimproved. It's not real obvious that there is an alley there even anymore. This here is, I'll also depict this on a site plan for you in a couple of slides, but I wanted to, you to take note of the fact that this is the private property access through lots 10 and 11, which are directly next to Peter Papesku's property. And this has been designated as a private access easement in 1994 as part of that, as part of that plat. It's just good to point that out at the visual here. And this is a little bit closer look of that in a plan view. And one of the things that I want to point out to you again is the crosshatch here or the, the straight lines, diagonal lines, are indicating the vacation in accordance with that recorded plat on, on May 24th, 1994, where the portion of the northern Aspen Street from Lake Avenue down to that alley was previously vacated, as well as the portion that roughly starts between one, lots one and two, to the north on Block 9, over of that alley. So, that is a closer demonstration of that. This is the request exhibit that comes along with that vacation of right-of-way that they have provided as an example. And as is the guidance for section 12 that talks to vacation of right-of-way when there is a straight line of right-of-way that's bounded, it is normal standard in that regulation that the abutting property owners would split that, divide that. So, that is what is being depicted here. Aspen Street right-of-way is 60 feet in width, so it would be 30 feet to either property owner that abuts that right-of-way. Here are some photos of the existing conditions of Aspen Street right-of-way. This first shot up here is from the alley looking down to South Avenue. This is Peter Papesku's home. And as you can see, it faces here. And even in this photograph, a car in the, the supposed drive, right-of-way that is, has become his right-of-way that he's claiming is his sole access. And this photo down to the bottom is from Lake Avenue looking down across the entire Aspen, what was Aspen Street right-of-way to the north and then what now is in consideration for vacation of right-of-way down to South Street, or South Avenue, excuse me. And this is looking up the other direction from South Avenue up to Lake Avenue, as well as from the alley down to Lake Avenue. Again, the reasons we're here are to hear about the vacation request of right-of-way between lots 12 of Block 9. And that is the lot for Peter Papesku and Lot 4 of Block 16 being Mr. Kopp's vacant lot. And the criteria that staff uses to analyze these requests falls in our section 12.08, vacation of public right-of-way. It does entail six criteria that we are asked to analyze the request to. And I'm going to go over each of those and then just explain our viewpoint from, from those criterias. The first criteria is that the existing utilities, we need to evaluate the existing utilities located in that right-of-way. And for this, because we already had a vacation of the northern portion, we wanted to remain consistent to that. So, we, we looked at first the northern portion that had been previously vacated and then how it should be consistently applied with regard to easements, any potential utilities through the southern portion that's in question for vacating. And there are no current service providers in that northern portion easement. There is in fact a 30-foot easement, 15-foot on either side of that center line to the owners of the properties on either side of that. And that easement is actually a 30-foot public utility easement as well as a pedestrian easement that was reserved for the future. However, going back to that aerial view, you'll notice that it doesn't seem like it's really created a social trail through there for, to justify a pedestrian easement. So, when we looked at this portion below for any potential easements that would need to be carried through, we really felt that the pedestrian easement wasn't necessary. We also have all of our internal departments as well as utility providers in the area look at these requests. And our utilities director, Kip Wiley, did review this and believes that it would be important for us to have a, continue that utility easement to the south. Also, in addition to that, IREA did come back with a comment that there are existing electric facilities on the parallel northern edge of the street to South Avenue and would like to reserve 10-foot public utility easement along that southernmost parallel portion to Aspen Street in order to service that. So, that looks like this when you put it together on the plan, this being the 30-foot public utility easement, as well as the 10-foot reserve public utility easement for IREA facilities. And these have been shared with the applicants. The applicants are fine with those easements, agree to those easements. And so, those will be condition of this particular recording to add those before recording. Criteria number two talks about emergency services access. And we do not feel that this will deny emergency service providers access for this small 8,400 square, square foot right-of-way that's being vacated. There are emergency accesses through five various rights-of-way surrounding this. First to the south, we have South Avenue, which most of the residences off of this street have their ingress egress off of that South Avenue. And then lots to the east, we have Boundary Street as access. Lots to the northwest have a private easement access. And this is a close-up of that private access easement. And there is also a, an agreement that was put into place, and I believe I attached that to your packets as well for you to review. And this is, when they created this easement plat back in 1994, they utilized lines, which was a little more elementary and not so obvious. Sometimes they blurred together. But if you close up and look at it, I believe I included the full map for you, you can tell that it talks about this 20-foot public utility easement and private access easement. And that's right here over lots 10 and, 10 and 11. We also have to the north, Lake Avenue, which does provide access to a few of those residences. And then also, we have the eastern portion of that alley remaining. It is unimproved, but nevertheless, a, in access. Criteria number three talks about the feasibility of road construction. And again, all of the agencies reviewed this. Fire department reviewed this, as well as the utility providers and emergency services. Those all reviewed this to make sure that it was not going to impede that sort of thing. And the road construction as well, we had our city engineer look at this. And there are no plans to improve the alley or Aspen Street right-of-way. Road construction to the remaining and surrounding rights-of-ways will not be impaired due to this. And again, a very small portion and also adjacent to an already vacated portion of Aspen Street. Criteria number four talks about access to the lots that are abutting the vacation area. And this is kind of covered under emergency services, but more focused at the We had our city engineer look at this, and there are no plans to improve the alley or Aspen Street right-of-way. Road construction to the remaining and surrounding rights-of-ways will not be impaired due to this, and again, a very small portion, and also adjacent to an already vacated portion of Aspen Street. Criteria number four talks about access to the lots that are abutting the vacation area, and this is kind of covered under emergency services, but more focused at the property owners that surround this area. I've labeled them. Number one here, of course, is Mr. Steve Kopp, and he has already, excuse me, Mr. Steve Kopp, and he has already determined that he will provide access to his vacant lot when it's developed through South Avenue. And then we have Ms. Ferguson, who has the private access agreement for her lot here at number two. And then off of Boundary Street, this is commercial property. It is for Mr. Randy Coburn, and he's recently been doing some improvements. His access and also his parking is off of Boundary Road. And then, of course, again, we have that unimproved alley access that's on the eastern portion through the middle. Criteria number five talks about area traffic patterns, and the area traffic does operate sufficiently. Again, city engineer and police chief reviewed the request, no traffic issues were noted, and vacating that small portion of Aspen Street not going to be an issue, especially since it leads into another vacated portion of the Aspen Street to the north. Criteria number six talks about adjacent landowners input. We did follow appropriate public notification procedures, and then in addition to that, we also provided adjacent property letters to residents within 150 feet radius, and we did receive two responses from property owners in that area that were just inquiring into the nature of their request and desired some further details. And then also, since the Planning Commission, we did receive a contact from Ms. Carol Wingo, who is the lots that are to the west of Mr. Peter Papesku's 308 Aspen Street, and the applicant, one of the applicants to this particular request. And Carol has expressed her opinions that she would like to see the section, this section of Aspen Street remain open to better serve as access to houses and alley. And so I did include a copy of a formal letter, requested her to write us a formal letter, she's not local. That is included as part of your packet as well. It's staff's recommendation, along with the approval and recommendation of Planning Commission to you, that we approve this vacation of right-of-way, and we have two conditions that we would like to place on this ordinance, and that is consistent to the public utility pedestrian easement shown in the easement dedication plat of 1994. 15-foot should be designated to either side of the center line, equating to 30-foot public utility easement, shall be added to the exhibit prior to final recording. And number two, also, that there be a 10-foot public utility easement parallel to the northern boundary of the South Avenue rights-of-way, which is added to the exhibit again prior to final recording. And that's all that I have. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions from the council for Lisa for staff?
Well, when that was first approved way back when to be a right-of-way, what justification was there to make that a right-of-way back then?
When it was approved to be vacated-
At that point, that it is a right-of-way access for the public.
Their justification at that time, I'm not real familiar with that. Maybe Sally, would you have an answer for that since you were here at that time?
This is the Greens edition, and this subdivision was platted in 1888.
So Sally was not here.
Well, for the vacation, I always ask you about.
Sally was starting to shake.
Sorry, Sally. So in the 1800s, late 1800s, when they platted much of the older part of town, they used a grid system approach, which had the 60-foot rights-of-way, small lots that were typically platted by 50 to 150 deep with alleys in the back. They were probably being drafted in Kansas City, somewhere where they had no concern about topography or other constraints. So what they were thinking over 100 years ago, who knows?
Well, I think that was it exactly. It was a grid system. If you look at the plats of the central part of downtown, it's all very rectangular and very square. There are numerous places in town where rights-of-way have not been built on simply because of the terrain, so this is not an unusual circumstance at all for it not to have been built on.
Other questions for Lisa or Sally?
I have one. I'm not certain what difference it makes to do the vacation of right-of-way if we then add back those two easements that you talked about. What is, exactly, does that mean?
Well, those easements are designated for the utilities, but they can still, they will still gain the 15-foot that goes on either side of that middle easement. And so it opens up the ability for him to use, when I say him, I'm talking about Peter Papesku and his residents, to use that as parking and their access. And then also, because of the fact that they're using it and the city has said that we're not improving it, then he would have the ability to approve that, or approve any, do any improvements that he needed.
Okay.
Title passes to the private owners.
Okay.
Subject to the reservation of the easement.
Okay, thanks. If there's no other questions from the council for the staff, we'll now open it for public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to come and speak to, for, against, about? Seeing none, we'll now close public comment. And let's see if Planning Commission has any final questions before I entertain a motion.
Planning Commission?
Or City Council, sorry. None? Okay, so was that a motion?
Move to approve ordinance 1215 with the two conditions briefed by Lisa.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's go for a vote.
Thank you. Harvey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Rovetto?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we have a pretty brief agenda tonight, so we're now going to go to public comments that are not on, or public comment on items not on the agenda. We have two folks that have signed up. Steve Jeroslow, who wants to comment on Agenda Item 8 Alpha, and I remind everyone that 8 Alpha was an initial posting, but Steve, if you'd like to make comments, come on up and state your name and your address, please.
Steve Jeroslow, I live at 610 Sun Valley Drive here in Woodland Park. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on 8A, particularly since you noted earlier that it wasn't open for public comment. I don't think I realized that at the time I signed up. My comments will be very, very brief. My concern is with the, not the current application of the draft ordinance, number 1216, but the future application. The current application, as envisioned, applies to the commercial core of Woodland Park, and in that regard, from my particular perspective, I think it's probably a smart idea, probably a good idea, and I'll let people more articulate than I am discuss that application. But with regard to potential future application of all of the five commercially zoned districts that we have in town, I do urge the council to seriously consider what impacts that may have on adjacent homeowners. And in the interest of full disclosure, I have to tell you that I'm one of the NIMBY guys, not in my backyard. Well, for the first time since I've been living here, there's now a matter before the council that potentially, potentially, a couple of years from now, might affect not my backyard, but actually my front yard, because a corner of my property shares a corner with a certain area, 13 acres across the highway, diagonally across the highway from Woodland Park, from, excuse me, from Walmart, and that is owned commercial slash multi-residential. And it seems to me that this proposed ordinance could affect that property as well, which means it could affect me somewhere down the road, if and when that property is subsequently sold and developed. And I'm sure there are many other private homeowners throughout the community whose property abuts one of these commercially zoned areas, particularly neighborhood commercial. So in the course of the deliberations over the next several meetings, I urge the council to, with the help of Sally Wiley and her staff, to carefully consider the impact that it might have on those other zones, particularly those near private neighborhoods.
Thanks, Steve, and I hope to see you again then at the 5th of June, public hearing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Darlene Hunera?
I don't have anything, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Darlene. Okay. Anyone else who did not sign up that would like to make any comments on an item not on the agenda? Okay, great. Reports, I have, I think, a list of things that I will not be able to read quite as eloquently as Mayor Turley, but let's get these out there for the public. On Friday, May 16th, it's the Third Friday Art Walk in downtown Woodland Park, and that is from 5:00 to 8:00, and I'm almost certain we're going to have good weather, so please do attend. On Tuesday, May 20th, the chamber's business after hours at above the tree line, at above tree line construction on Highway 24 in Divide. That's 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. Wednesday, the 21st of May, is Rite of Silence. That's a slow-paced, five-mile bicycle ride honoring injured or killed cyclists, and they will meet at Woodland Park High School from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m., and that is a free event. Any comments on that, any knowledge of that? Wednesday, May 28th, there is a ceremony at Lyons Park honoring the 4th Engineer Battalion at 4:30 p.m., and David, do you have details?
I'd like to share a few with council and the audience. Most folks know that the City of Woodland Park entered into a partnership with the 4th Engineer Battalion out of Fort Carson in 1992, thanks to the efforts of many, some sitting at this dais. In 1992, an additional flagpole was installed in Lyons Park to fly the engineer flag, and that partnership has been going on ever since. Since the global war on terrorism started, we've paid special attention to the 4th Engineer Battalion and when they've been gone, and we decided, in cooperation with the battalion commander, that we would only fly the flag when soldiers from that battalion were in harm's way. And over the last three years continuously, elements of the 4th Engineer Battalion have either been in Iraq or Afghanistan, and the flag has flown nonstop to remind the community that we have soldiers that we're connected with who are in harm's way protecting our freedoms. The last soldiers from that unit will come home this weekend, this weekend. And so on Wednesday, May 28th, the senior leadership from the battalion and the community will gather at Lyons Memorial Park at 4:30 in the afternoon to lower the engineer flag, recognizing that all those soldiers are back home with their families, having done their duty. So I went to invite the council, I went to invite the community to Lyons Memorial Park on Wednesday, May 28th at 4:30 for what will be a very wonderful ceremony. Thank you.
Thanks, David, I will be there. On the 1st of June, which is a Sunday, there will be Jazz in June at the Ute Pass Cultural Center at 2:00 p.m., and that is free. And then finally, on Thursday, the 5th of June, the chamber's Lunch and Learn on the USA Pro Challenge Cycling Event begins at 11:30 and goes to 1:00. Reservations are required, and you can call, I'm assuming you can call the chamber for that, any more information on that? Anyone here that has any more comments on that one? Okay, thanks. Let's go ahead and go to council reports. I want to make a comment. Councilman Carlson is going to talk a little bit about most recent activities of the Woodland Aquatic Project Board, but I've also asked our city manager to talk about a concept that we discussed collectively on a way ahead for the potential financing approach for an aquatic project here in town. So we'll have a little bit of both, from both of those gentlemen. Gary, anything? I'll start with Gary. Gary's excited, I can tell.
Main Street's been meeting, Brian's not here tonight, so, Main Street's been meeting every week, and we're going to meet every two weeks, starting the next meeting, actually, after that will be meeting two weeks. But the board is plugging along with everything that they've got to do to submit the package on July 1st for us to at least be a contender for Main Street designation. So that's going along very well. Creative Arts District is having a retreat on May 27th for the Board of Directors, the new Board of Directors, and from that, they're going to decide how to organize themselves so that they can be an effective creative arts district over here, so it looks pretty promising. Other than that, I've got one concern. We're approaching fire season, and I've gone to briefings before, assessments and all that stuff about, you know, what do we do to mitigate, obviously, our environment here to make it safer for us? But I was looking at this, and I was in the military for 23 years, space operations, I'm aware of sensors that we have and the technology that we have to be able, one, to detect these fires in the first place. And I'm not too sure, I don't know what I'm asking for, but I'm asking maybe for consensus on this board to see we, as a unit, make our concern known to organizations like Pike's Peak Area Council, which is an organization which includes many counties together, and by coalescing our activities together, we can be more formative as far as making requests to government agencies to do things for us like fire mitigation. I'd like to have maybe some sort of consensus from this group here if we should proactively go out there and suggest that we have some sort of detection method. One of the ideas I had before, which was turned down by actually the National Park Service, I forget, Jerry, I think her name was, I mentioned it to her, "Oh, we can't do that." Well, you know, I think as far as fire is concerned, I think detection is a major factor. You know, we can detect these fires before they get out of hand, I mean, we can get ahead of the game. I'm trying to be proactive here, but in order to do that, you're going to involve a lot of governmental agencies. One of the ideas I had was, you know, we got rid of a lot of the fire towers in the past because of budgetary constraints, and fire towers have been our big source of being able to detect fires around the country. We have a wonderful mountain here called Pike's Peak. On top of Pike's Peak, it provides us a 360-degree panorama view of an entire huge area. And I, you know, I'd like to maybe somehow go forward to governmental agencies to put detection system on top of Pike's Peak during the areas, during the times where our fire has arisen. And that's one idea I have, is first detect. It's great detecting, and that's one of the efforts, but at the detection, we have to have a way of responding to that so that it doesn't get out of hand. If you can catch this fire with an hour or two after it, in all likelihood, you can probably prevent it from spreading out. And that would involve a lot of governmental interagency actions and MOUs, memorandum understands, a memorandum agreements, with, for instance, a C-130 outfit for fire retardant stuff, with the Army for the helicopters and other civilian contractors that can pour water on these things. The whole idea is you detect, then you have people on alert during this period of time who can go out there and respond real quickly to prevent us from getting catastrophe like we've had in the past. So that's what I'm looking for, is have a consensus over here. You think it's smart for us to maybe voice our opinion to, like Pike's Peak Area Council, to go further with governmental organizations to be able to present this kind of approach to them? I don't know if they've thought about it, but you know, it's one of the things I'm looking at.
I'm pretty certain they've thought about it, and I'm going to ask David to respond to part of that, because I totally agree with you in terms of detection, that might be one of our weak links, but in terms of intergovernmental agreements, there are quite a few in place. I mean, it's what I do on a day-to-day basis. But David, if you want to talk about some of those agreements that we have with neighboring entities and federal partners?
And these aren't just as a result of the Waldo Canyon Fire, excuse me, or the Black Forest Fire, these have been in place for decades, but there are partnerships. I understand completely what you're saying, detect, respond, eliminate the issue. The forests around us belong to the US Forest Service, so that would be our first opportunity, and I don't want to use the word hurdle, but it would be our first opportunity to cause something to occur. We periodically meet with them as intergovernmental agencies. The last meeting was probably in the spring of last year, perhaps the fall, and it was down in Colorado- perhaps the fall, and it was down in Colorado Springs, about 100 people showed up. All fire districts, all municipalities, U.S. Forest Service, State Forest Service, et cetera. The detection process that you're mentioning, perhaps it would work, and we can certainly ask them to pursue that. But I'll tell you that there are numerous detection opportunities that exist right now, from satellites. But the confusion that exists is, many people burn things in the rural areas. They're not mandated to not burn things like we are here in the city limits. So sometimes there are multiple fires going that are controlled burns, et cetera. So there has to be this communication effort to identify what's a hazard and what's not. But the, we do lean forward. In fact, I still owe the council an update on our own after-action review from the Waldo Canyon Fire, and I've not forgot about that. Bill, you've, we've got lots of fire expertise sitting at this table. Bill fought fires in Idaho. Do you have any thoughts? You've worked with the Forest Service?
Yeah, I would just like to offer that over the last several years, through the Healthy Forest Initiative and all, we have been the recipient and the beneficiary of a lot of forest fuels mitigation work around the city of Woodland Park to protect our city. I don't think there's any other entity around the state that's probably benefited as much as we have. Those efforts are continuing. We've been a little frustrated this year to get from the Forest Service where exactly they're working this year and what they're doing. But we're in contact with them on the local level, the local works that are up here. I contacted them almost weekly on recreational things, but also on fire and fuels and public works. And I won't speak for the chief, but we're in contact with the fire district, and we're all working hand-in-hand every day on those kinds of issues.
We also have a, our community has a heightened sense of awareness, too, and the chief gets calls, or his 911 gets many calls. But if the council wants to draft a letter to send to the Forest Service to talk about detection, please do. It won't hurt anything. I'm just not convinced it will help anything. But Bill mentioned the mitigation efforts. Just about the entire east side of the community was done from Cristola up to King's Crown and beyond about five or six years ago. And then they switched their efforts to the west side of town, and so there have been many acres that have been masticated and cleared as part of this removal of the ladder fuels process. But we'll certainly take council's direction and move forward so that we can perhaps make things better.
Well, I think we need to do that in concert with others because us alone, we're too small to have any effect on any large governmental organization. But as a community, a larger community with Colorado Springs and all that, if we get together and draft something as a huge community, that might have more of impact.
Yeah, I don't know that it's going to have any impact at all because the Forest Service is dedicated to preserving the forest. So they're leaning forward to prevent fires anyway. So, I mean, we can encourage it, but I'm not sure what benefit will do. Like I said, it won't hurt anything.
David, I would like to add, too, that we recently updated with the county the hazard mitigation plan, and fire was the number-one topic of discussion. And so there were a lot, a lot of players and people at the table for that. So that's been an ongoing effort over the last five years also.
David, could we, at a minimum, get an update on after-action from Waldo Canyon at the next meeting? And I asked for it at the next meeting because, if you recall, the anniversary of Waldo Canyon is 23 June. So it would, even if it's just an update. And in terms of response, because it is kind of what I do for a living now, the city has a number of mechanisms to ask for immediate response, to include requesting assistance from the military facilities. However, that does not include the use of the C-130s. The C-130s have to be approved by the National Interagency Fire Coordination Center up in Boise. And if you've gotten to that point, it's pretty bad. But in terms of Chinooks with Buckets, those now exist at Carson, we have the same opportunity that any community in the area does to ask for immediate response, if necessary. And that usually occurs on a non-reimbursable basis. So that's the goodwill of the commander at Carson or at the Air Force Academy to bring whatever assets they can to bear. And I'm assuming we also have established memorandums of agreement with other assets, you know, like neighboring fire departments?
Absolutely. During the Hayman Fire, we, I can't recall what they're called, reciprocal agreements. And we pulled in even an engine company from Fort Carson, and two days later, we pulled in a combat-heavy engineer battalion to help us build a fire break around the city. We didn't have to use it, but we've done this before. We know how to do it.
But I would agree with you, Gary. The weak link is detection, and that seemed to be part of the issue with the Waldo Canyon Fire. And maybe as part of your presentation back to council, you could at least help us understand what is available now and help us understand where the gaps are if we do want to take this as a formal action. Ken?
On a personal note, and Gary and I both live, like many people in this community, bordering the national forest. And I think there needs to be, I've pursued this a little bit myself, and it gets to be, how should I say, a little cumbersome dealing with the national forest people. But, you know, we can mitigate around our house, and then there's trees right there. We'd like to at least de-lim, not cut them down, maybe de-lim. How far back can we go? Get some ruling from somebody. Can we go 100 feet, 100 yards? Because it doesn't do a whole lot of good just to clear your lot when so many of us are bordering that. We need to go back into the woods a little ways. And they don't seem to understand that. They don't seem to... They told me they needed an environmental study. I said, "I don't want to cut the trees down. I just want to de-lim them up 10 feet or so." Didn't get anywhere.
We're going to do a little research, because I think it's in your area, because I'm only two ridges over from you, that I think five or six years ago, they went through and did...
Yes, they did a lot of great work. They did a great work.
It's got a deep beetle damage.
Yeah.
It really was for both. It solved a lot of issues as related to fire damage, too. So what I think their philosophy was, was create a swath of safety, and then there's another area that you're seeing from your house, and then they've got what the urban area has done.
Yeah, they did a wonderful job. I mean, probably several hundred trees behind us were cleaned out, and then you had somebody, a private contractor, come in and take out the dead ones that weren't beetle-infested. They did a great job. But I'm just talking about the trees that are left.
Right.
It's just de-lim them. I mean, it seems like a minor thing. I hate to make a big deal out of it. But to me, so much of our community is surrounded by national forests. It'd be nice to get some clarification. What can we do without going through a lot of legal hassle?
Okay, we can pursue that.
Would it be possible to have a representative from Forest Service here at a future council meeting?
We can try.
Thank you.
Well, we pay their salaries.
Yeah, but they're, we run into roadblocks with them all the time when we're talking about trying to reopen Rampart Range Road. It's one of my greatest frustrations and bills. And they've got four or five people for this region. You know, it's just a small number of people. It's incredibly small. There's a couple of people that are here very local that we work with very closely. We'll start with them. We'll see what we can do.
That's another issue about the Rampart Range Road. I don't think we've been forceful enough to make our views known. We need to get that open as a secondary route.
I've personally been pretty obnoxious, but I guess it's not...
Well, not obnoxious enough, obviously.
There have been letters from the mayor. There have been letters from me. We continue to pursue it.
Well, it's got to be larger than us. It's got to be...
Pike's Peak Area Council of Governments has written letters to them as well, and it just isn't, we're not being successful.
Well, then, we got to find out why we're not successful because I think we need to do something that is successful.
I'm not, I don't try to do things to be unsuccessful. But what I'm telling you is that we have taken it at least to the entire PPACG to Jerry Marr, and she has denied the request.
Well, then we need to get back to her or her supervisor.
Jerry, Jerry's gone now.
Good. Then we need to pursue with the new person.
We'll do that.
So we will look forward to an update then at the 5th of June meeting.
We'll be happy to provide it.
Bob, on to pools.
Yes, as a, the council liaison to the Woodland Aquatic Project Board of Directors, we had our meeting last night, and our primary concern at that meeting, other than getting new members and whatever, was the schedule that David had come out with recently. It didn't appear to put requests for proposals near front. So Jerry, our president, has contacted you. He tried to talk to you by phone today. I don't know the results of that. If you've got something to update, other, you know, then I'll let you go ahead and go first.
Sure. Thank you. No, I did not have a chance to speak with Jerry this afternoon. The, basically, the process that I shared with council was based on our discussion of bundling the bonds to accomplish the three different projects: Memorial Park, Fleet Maintenance, and the Woodland Aquatic Project. It's no surprise that the community has wanted an aquatic project for a long, long time. It's also no surprise that the community was not in support of raising taxes to do that. So we've waited patiently over the years until we could get to a point where we felt like we could fund this with existing revenues, and we're at that point. And so what we're working on now is determining what the size of that bond package will be. I've got one equation and one unknown, and the one unknown is the size of the Woodland Aquatic Project. The Fleet Maintenance Facility, we're going to have a really strong estimate on that within a month. Same thing for Memorial Park. And then I also can figure out the ability that we have to service the debt, and I can back into an amount that we would be able to fund for the aquatic project. And so that's the way that I'm going to approach this. So I'm waiting to get, and I'm quite confident that we can, with that analysis, come up with a project that meets the requirements that the community wants for an aquatic facility. So I don't need to push the request for proposal because right now, I don't, we don't even have the community's vote to bundle the bonds, and we have to get that because it's a Tabor issue. So we will work the math and back into an ability to fund the aquatic project. And there are a couple of other moving parts, too, as you saw in here. Some work with the DDA, some estimates as it relates to infrastructure, and the like.
Yes. Okay. Well, that's the part that the board has concern with. And for any project, you should have a detailed scope and cost estimate for that so that the voters know what they're voting for. It would be great to have renderings, drawings, floor plans. All of that stuff is part of a marketing package to sell this to people. If you're just saying, "Oh, it's something in the range of $8 to $10 million", we don't know what it is or anything, that makes it really hard for us to help sell this project to the community.
Sure it does. If the council wants to cause me to allocate funding for that design, I would struggle doing that with this year's budget. So that, to me, that's the critical step, is the funding for that design, or even for an initial scoping, hasn't been provided. It has for the other components.
Well, back on the 8th of October, when we were talking about, right after the 3rd of October meeting, when you had the community strongly in support of this, the following week, we meant to talk about how we were going to use the excess contingency funds when we moved the 10% down to 10%. And at that time, you said you had sufficient funds without having to do a different, separate line item, not only for Gary's project from the Main Street program, but also for the aquatic project, you had sufficient funds to do the concept design. This was then followed by a meeting in 18 November when the mayor asked council members whether there was anybody who had any concerns with the project other than the funding. If funding was over, and we all agreed at the time we needed to move out with the concept design to, in fact, identify what the funding was. So the council has given previous directions to you, or guidance, or whatever you want to call it, to proceed with the concept design. Now, we realized that there are some things that we needed to do with you, and we've been working, the Woodland Aquatic Board of Directors has been working with you for several years now in that process. And so on the 8th of January, we met, the board met with you to go over the RFP, and we agreed to the changes need to be done, and you said you would go ahead and make those changes. Now, we identified at that meeting, the critical thing was where was it going to be located? And at the time, you took action on that and immediately found the property over from the school district as a potential solution. All of this, however, came together at our Goals and Objectives meeting when we all agreed that probably the best site, which would really help the DDA, too, as far as being, getting that going, was to have the site at the DDA property. And also at the Goals and Objectives meeting, we confirmed that there's funds within existing funds. So board concerns about, or council concerns about the funding, basically, we're addressed. Now, of course, we have to get voter approval, but, two, the location was agreed. So there's nothing really to block the release of the RFP. Now, there are several aspects, other than just the promotional aspects of selling this project to the community, which involves showing them some details on this. But if you're going to go right after the vote and go out to try to get bond packages, one of the prerequisites that bond brokers need is a pretty good estimate and scope of what is it you're going to build. You need to have a bond marketing package, okay? And so therefore, it's got to be done before November anyway if you're going to go immediately after that to produce, get bonds. The other aspect is that with this concept design, you will have a guaranteed maximum price. So there are a lot of advantages. In fact, procedurally, if you're going to do a capital investment project, just as we did for Memorial Park, we've spent $25,000 to defend the scope in that. You spent money on the vehicle maintenance facility to define the scope in that. It's logical to have a similar thing for the aquatic project. Not backing into numbers. It's not, hey, okay, I'm going to spend $10 million, and I got to spend this much for the vehicle maintenance and this much for Memorial Park, and therefore, this is what's left for the aquatic project. That's backwards. That's not the way you do project management, program management. So I would, I'm going to make a motion, tasking you to, in fact, issue the RFP as soon as possible so that we can come up with these critical numbers. But if you have any discussion you want to make before I make that motion, I'd be glad to hear it.
If I could, we can entertain a motion tonight to, in fact, direct our city manager to make that expense. I think all of us had considered that that expense for a design plan would have to be accomplished before we went to a bond vote. But Bob, would you be willing to do, or would the council be willing to do working meeting? In order, or not a working...
A work session?
A work session, in order to get a little more finite on this.
When it comes to cost, we've talked about that, too, on the 18th of November. When we had the bidders conference with the bidders, they had estimated the cost of this would be between $30,000 and $40,000. David, at the time, thought it could be as much as $80,000. But in comparison to the $25,000 we spent for a million-dollar Memorial Park, the $80,000 for a $7 million, $6 million, $7 million project is very inconsequential. We're not talking about doing the final design here.
I hear you, and I would just caution, don't compare apples and oranges. I'm understanding where you're coming from in terms of proportionality, but if, Bob, if you want to move forward with a motion, that would cause us...
I mean, we have two legal problems with that. We are required, under open meetings laws, to have on our agenda the business items that the council's going to vote on. So you could have a non-binding, head-knocking consensus sort of action, but you wouldn't be able to take action on that matter without putting it on a published agenda and taking it up after you've done so. The second concern, and to the extent that you'd be appropriating funds that you did not appropriate in last approval of your budget, then that is, you need to follow your charter requirements on how to press a claim.
So let me make a couple of comments because I don't disagree with everything you said. I do disagree with some things. But when the discussion was held in October, November, I believe we were talking about $13, finishing up the year, not looking to 2014. That's correct, but it was talking about the monies in 2013 that were residual from our execution of the 2013 budget. So the monies could have been available then. But then we transitioned into the '14 budget.
That was the November meeting.
So we absolutely, the council allocated funds to do the design for Fleet Maintenance and for Memorial Park. So that, and those are rocking and rolling, and we're probably at 95% on both of those. But it's my recollection that we didn't allocate any funds...
But it's my recollection that we didn't allocate any funds for any component of the Aquatic Center for execution in 2014. Now, and so we moved forward with the 2014 budget, and we brought everything down so that we would have that 10% reserve without any monies being spent for the Aquatic Center. So if the council wants to have a consensus or nod of the head, or at some point in the future, then we're going to need to adjust the budget to do that. And I just don't know that it's a necessary step. I understand your logic. It's not the most...it's not the best way to approach determining the funding. But what I'm confident in doing is that by doing the math, we can determine what size that package can be. And then, if at that point, if the council wants to dedicate that money to get the concept drawing, so that we have that marketing plan, we can. The one thing that I don't know that we would have to do is we would not have to immediately go into the bond market for, right after the election. Plus, our bond council has told us, we don't have to have the in-depth design or even the huge concept. We have to have just the general concept, and I think we can do that in a reasonable time. So that's my struggle, is that I didn't think I had the full council guidance as part of the 2014 budget to spend monies on the Aquatic Center. If the council wants to direct me in a different direction, we'll just have to look and see how we make that happen. I mean, we're making great progress here with this whole concept.
I like that we're making some progress. It's just I like to follow normal process and practice, too.
Normal process, from your experience, may be different than normal process here.
Or a wide range of programs. But, or even our own programs. You have Memorial Park Design, okay? So we know what we're doing. But at that meeting in 18 November, for which there is no record, Gary Bravato asked for $60 million for his downtown Main Street program. There were a number of things...
$60 million?
$60,000, sorry about that.
I didn't even ask for $60,000. I think the figure was $10,000, if I remember correctly.
But there were some other requests.
And that's, by the way, that's not for one specific project. When you talk about $10,000 Main Street, that's to the advantage of everybody in the community, not just one section of the community.
Okay.
Because that's part of economic development.
Let me bring this back in. What I am certain of is that we did not have a budget line for any expense associated. We collectively agreed that that was going to happen at some point, but we also collectively agreed that we would, by law, have to take this to a vote for a bond or for taxes.
Was it on the agenda tonight?
No, it was not on the agenda. I offered the council member an opportunity to talk about what's happening with the Aquatic Project Board. I don't think, as Aaron has already pointed out, this is not a motion that we can make tonight. But if you want to do a work session where we can work out the details of the PERT diagram and a way ahead with a bond bundling vote, then we'll do that, if the council members are willing to spend that additional time to do so.
Yes.
But not at the meeting tonight.
Okay. But I did, I mean, David suggested that if there was, you know, absent a motion, but there was a nod of assent or something like that.
We still can't do a nod or assent on a line item in the budget.
Well, I did ask David to put this on the agenda in my message at the end of the...
Well, what I'm asking for, a nod or consent from the council, if we would like to do a work session in the very near future. Let David do his magic with scheduling, and we'll work through this detail.
Well, I would like to have a special session, so that this, in fact, is recorded on the record.
I'm not sure what a special session would accomplish.
It's one of the three types of meetings that are called for in our charter, regular meetings, special meetings, and executive sessions. So I would prefer a special session in the immediate future, if possible.
Okay. We'll let David do his scheduling magic then, and we will, at the recommendation of Councilman Carlson, ask for a special session for the purpose of discussing the way ahead with a bond bundling...
Yeah, I'd like to know what's the desired outcome. Why are we...why, what's the intent?
Well, the intent is then to get a decision to move ahead with the RFP, but also any other questions that people may have on your schedule, okay?
All right, then we'll look forward to time spent discussing this. Problem is important. Okay. Ken?
Nothing.
No?
Yes, I have three things. That was exciting, though. Thanks, Bob. Brought the temperature up in the room. I went to a Parks and Rec meeting. That was my first. It was very nice. We need volunteers for all the sports. So if any parents out there have little ones and they want to volunteer as coaches, contact Parks and Rec. The other thing is the teen center. My son goes to the teen center. It's a nice little, it's right behind City Hall here. Looking for, they were talking about donations, looking for donations, maybe some football, frisbees, because summer is coming, and there's going to be a lot more. They said on the average, 60 kids a day go through the teen center. That's a lot. And yesterday, or two days ago, I was there, and there was maybe 20. So we're looking for some donations to help out, because they're short on sports equipment.
Before we ask for donations, I need, I'll talk to our teen center coordinator and that chain of command.
Sure.
I would like to understand what the scope of the needs are, and to see if there's, if we can take care of that without asking the community for donations. If they want to donate pizzas, or sodas, or things like that, but for the equipment for the programs, we need to look at that internally.
Okay, I didn't know that, so thank you. That clarifies. I did buy them pizza.
Thank you.
And I did get a nice, a nice little card with all the kids signing it, so that was... Another thing is the Lions Club. I had a chance to sit down with the members of the Lions Club, and I just want to promote it a little bit here. A lot of people don't know about the Lions Club. If you head out 67, right when you get out of town, you have, off to the left, you see a big sign that says Lions Club. And I don't know if you've ever driven back there, but it's a beautiful camp, beautiful camp, and they're looking for some members. So I just want to read up what the Lions Club does. In fact, I believe the Lions, don't we have a park named after the Lions?
Correct.
Yeah, with all the flags. The Lions Camp, they actually sponsor special needs campers. I didn't know that. They're helping with expenses, events, and upkeep, pennies for people. So if you go to some of the establishments there, you see a little thing, throw in your extra change, it helps. They count it down to the penny. It's quite impressive. Individuals with vision problems. So the donkey basketball, that was pretty fun. We all went to that. All those proceeds go to kids' sight screening for preschoolers, Rocky Mountain Eye Bank, providing eye exams for glasses. They also have youth programs, flags for first graders, peace poster programs, scholarships. We're working on that. We're going to try to get some scholarships for the kids. Woodland Park Lions Park, we just talked, American Cancer Society, and also they support other Pike's Peak area charities. If you'd like to become a member, you can get ahold of Scott Davis, I don't know, can I say the number? That's all I have to say. Oh, teen center hours will change to 2 to 6. Thank you.
Thanks, Noel.
I would just add to that, even though I'm a Kiwanis member. I think the Lions still collects used glasses.
Yes, yes, they do collect used glasses.
Yeah, just make sure everybody knows that. It's a good use that they do.
You can also just search on, let's see, Google, go to Google, Pike's Peak Lions, and look for Woodland Park Pike's Peak Lions Club, and you can get all your information there.
Excellent.
Thank you.
John?
Nothing.
All righty. City Attorney.
Mayor Phil Timmerman.
Thank you. And City Manager?
No, ma'am, not a thing.
Any of our other department heads?
No, ma'am.
Yes, she?
Just one.
Like I said.
Okay.
The Kiwanis Club recognizes law enforcement employees once a year from Woodland Park, Kriegerich, and the Sheriff's Department. They recognize Beverly Hodges for her work with the Woodland Park Teen Corps all last year. That was all I had to say.
Next question.
Okay, if we have nothing else, that adjourns the meeting.